Know that the chairperson is running a little behind and instead of me just taking off with it, I'm just put it, put us on pause a little bit. So take a deep breath.
You got five minutes.
Yeah.
For so.
I told her to slow down. Don't go so fast. She's close still, right?
Yeah, she's cool.
Tim sitting next to what you started loading on that.
Yeah. I don't know more Roger's bad.
He was the one who was telling you last night. He didn't say anything about not being there.
Two minutes late, not bad at all. Take your time already.
Yeah, we did announce. They take time for Tim's grabbing some stuff and he's.
You're fine. That one's been here. Tell everybody we're on pause.
How are you?
Good.
You look good.
Yeah, I feel much better.
Good. Reese, I apologize.
You'll be fine.
Good thing I didn't come across in law enforcement. Tim's grabbing some stuff?
Yes.
Breakfast. Dead battery.
Then there's Julie. Hi.
Had what?
Yeah, dead battery and no cord. Now it looks like she's got a cord.
We're ready. Thank you. Got a preparation information. Alright guys, we got. Want to lead us in the pledge, Craig?
We have done. We haven't done a thing. We're waiting for you.
Let's go.
Thank you.
You gonna lead us in the pledge?
Oh, yeah.
Since you returned?
Yep. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic which stands by nation under God and in this soul.
Mark Serbrook.
President.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Charles Wiltie.
Here.
Roger Mayhew. Benny David. Here. Commissioners, any additions or corrections to the agenda?
Alright. I have an addition to the to the agenda of probably new business, D move claims to C. Parks and Rec credit card approval will change. Commissioner Simmons had it before.
Parks and Rec credit card?
Yeah.
Any other corrections or additions?
No.
Motion to.
Motion to approve what's the change?
Motion Commissioner Scott?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Review of minutes. We have the March 27th, 2025 regular meeting minutes.
I've read. I've reviewed the minutes. Make motion. We approve them.
Motion. Motion Commissioner Wiltie. Support from Commissioner Serbrook. Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Public comment on agenda item manners only. Any public comment in the in the room? Any public comment on the phone? One presentation six. Ladonna Schultz, prosecuting attorney related to spotlight award presentation. Donna, come on up. Thanks for being here.
Thank you for having me. Good evening. As you can see from the display in the hall, this is National Crime Victims Rights Week. Annually, it's during the week that we spotlight not only why the needs of victims should be centered in every step of our criminal justice process, but also shine a spotlight on an organization working in Ogoma County that aids victims of crime through their valuable resources and care. This year, the Ogoma County Prosecutor's Office is shining a spotlight on the excellent work of the team at the Northern Michigan Child Assessment Center. Now, I know this commission is very familiar with the CAC and has worked. The center is often described to you as providing comprehensive response to suspected abuse, neglected and sexually abused children through forensic interviews, medical evaluations, therapy and victim advocacy. Today, I'd like to briefly talk about the benefits of the Child Assessment Center and investigating and prosecuting these child abuse cases. First, the multi-disciplinary approach allows agencies to cooperate on cases and bring their collective knowledge to the fight for justice. They aid in gleaning accurate information from the child, which aids me in making educated and informed charging decisions and helps me to evaluate the strength of my case. On the other hand, their trained interviewers also use hypothesis testing to expose false or misleading reports. This prevents innocent people from being charged in the first. Secondly, the officer in charge of the case receives a wealth of information from the CAC to help him or her in their investigative capacity. These could be medical reports, witness statements, as just a few examples of the work product the officer receives while working with the center to help build their case. Third, the CAC employs highly skilled experts that can be reliably called upon to testify in court. Medical experts, mental health experts and child development experts are available for me to confer with prior to deciding whether or not I'm going to issue a warrant while determining case strategy and before testifying at trial. Our office has never received a bill. They provide these services with dollars from county governments like ours and their own fundraising efforts. Fourth, I can't tell you how many times I've sent children to the CAC for support services when the child was too scared or emotionally unable to testify publicly about their abuse or to call out their abuser. The criminal justice system is not easy to navigate as an adult. As a child, it's even harder. By working with the victims in aftercare through their support services, they have allowed me to go forward on prosecution on cases where the victim was unwilling or unable to initially testify as a result of their trauma. Lastly, because of everything I've just mentioned, the coordinated services of the Child Assessment Center has improved the overall prosecution rates and outcomes of child abuse and sexual assault cases in this county, which makes kids in Ogoma County much safer. So on behalf of the Ogoma County Prosecutor's Office, I'd like to present Becky Younger and her team this spotlight award and thank them for all that they do on behalf of victims of crime in this county. It says, "In honor of National Crime Victims Rights Week, April 6th through the 12th, you're getting the Kinship and Connecting and Healing Award. It's presented to the Northern Michigan Child Assessment Center this 10th day of April and the year 2025 of our Lord for distinguished and dedicated services rendered to the victims of violent crimes presented by the county."
You're good. No worries. Good.
And if I may invite Becky Justice to speak to you briefly?
Just a few words. Thank you, Ladonna. Ladonna has been one of our strongest partners since we opened the center 10 years ago, and she was on our planning committee advocated for these services and one of those prosecutors who just really understood the need and the services that we provide and how crucial they can be. So thank you, Ladonna. So just to reiterate a little bit to, you know, the 10 years that we've been at the center, the expansions that we have had, we started just doing those forensic interviews and advocacy, quickly realized that services in Northern Michigan are few and far between for children. So we quickly got on board and started partnering with MyMichigan for medicals. I work with a pediatrician who comes to the center and does those non-acute exams. We expanded services into Iosco, our neighboring county here, also to Atsico. So we continue to grow and meet those needs. And like Ladonna mentioned, one of this near and dear to my heart is meeting those needs from a mental health standpoint. So we really got to make sure that we're providing these kids and these families the services that they need. So continuing to expand services where we did for the past 10 years has just been crucial in order to keep our community safe. Just a little bit, since we opened to the center 10 years ago, we have seen over 3,400 children. Over 640 of those were Roscommon County kids. We provided 265 medicals for kids. Thirty-five of those kids were from Ogoma County. The advocacy services, we just shy of 7,000 families have come and seen us for advocacy services. And 1,414 of those services were Ogoma County families. Our mental health services, since we've opened the center, we've had almost 3,730 kids that received mental health services. And 705 of those were from Ogoma County. And like Ladonna mentioned, the way we partner with our community, partner with law enforcement protective services to make sure that we're building a strong case on those cases that need to move forward with prosecution. We've assisted in our counties on 300 cases that have gone to court for prosecution and 61 of those were cases in Ogoma County. So continuing to partner and work together with the communities to make sure that we're keeping our community safe. The next 10 years, the work that we have ahead of us is sustaining these services. We need to continue these services. We need to sustain the services. So a couple of things that we're working on, you'll see, I invited you to an event that's coming up on May 17th. That is our building campaign event. Since we have grown so much in the past 10 years, we are busting at the seams at our capacity. And the commissioners in Roscommon County are gonna deed us some additional space in the craft center that we are currently located in. So we're taking over the detention center and want to renovate that to meet our families' needs. So we have this event coming up. Another couple of campaigns that we're doing and the flyer that I left here for you is just another way that we want the community to help support us. We're starting a payroll deduction campaign. So we're gonna be working with all of our county partners, working with our schools, hospitals in the community to look at the support that we can get through payroll deduction. I have started an executive club, so please join me as a part of the executive directors club and being a monthly donor to the center. So you can scan any of our QR codes and it'll take you right to our website that you can become a monthly donor and join our executive club. We need to make sure that we're partnering in lots of ways to sustain the services that we need for these kids to be able to continue their healing. So again, I want to thank you. I've been here for the last 10 years giving presentations and updates on the center. So thank you commissioners for your support, all that you've done for the center, your trust in us that we are providing the best services for these families. I thank our judges and our prosecutors for partnering and working with us so we can continue to just really build a safe community. So thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything that you do. Anything else, Ladonna?
No, that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item 6B, Diane. Well Vance. Coordinator. Good evening. Come on up.
You have my PowerPoint.
We do.
We do.
We do.
See how this works. I'm not used to doing this, but. So I am Diane Gory. I'm from Well Vance. I run, I'm a federal grant coordinator. So I run our M-HAT grant currently, which is the Mental Health Awareness Training Project. And I'm also our lead system, which is Critical Incident Stress Management Coordinator for our agency. So we're gonna go through a little bit of those. I just want to talk a little bit about the importance of why we started looking at this grant. When I first took over, I did clinical services for 22 years with you. And then I took over our federal grants when COVID hit. We did through SAMSA was our first federal grant that our agency did, and that was, we were able to open our doors to everyone, which was really important to me because when I first started with Community Mental Health 27 years ago, we did that. We kind of served everyone. And then as over time, we've kind of had to silo and kind of change our service platform a little bit. And I also did prevention for 15 years at Surline, so I was able to kind of see everyone as well. So for me, it was a little hard to not be able to have everyone serve. So when COVID came and we were able to get that grant, we were able to open our doors to everyone, which was amazing and provide services to over 150 individuals that wouldn't have normally qualified for our services. And not only were we able to provide services, but we were also able to pay for medications and other things, transportation to get them appointments, childcare, lots of creative things to get the people the treatment that they needed. So when that started coming to an end, we wanted to look at what other things could we do to provide services for our community? And we started looking and so we wanted to look at some stats. We know before COVID, it was about one in five people that struggle, both youth and adults with a mental health concern. Now, post-COVID, the information that we're getting is about one in four adults or youth that struggle with a mental health concern. Mental illness affects about one out of every eight people that walk into an emergency room. Typically has something to do with a mental illness or substance use. That's a lot. One out of every eight people that walk into an emergency room. Suicide is the second leading cause of death for young people ages 14 to 24 in the state of Michigan. It's the 10th leading cause of death overall in the United States. Suicide rates have increased by 36% since the year 2000. We lose approximately 17 veterans a day to suicide in our country. And that's difficult. They, the VA is doing some right things though, because if you notice, usually you have 22. It got it down to 17. So they're doing some really great things. We need to start doing that more for everyone. But Saddle Valley alone, and again, we service those with no insurance or Medicaid. We screen over 1,000 individuals and we cover Ogoma, Iosco and Ascoa County. We screen over 1,000 individuals a year for emergency services. So people that are at risk of harming themselves or others, we do over 1,000 screens a year. Thousand. But we don't really talk about mental health very much in our communities. We kind of sweep underneath the rug and we kind of try to hide it. We were number two in the state of Michigan for a while for our suicide rate. We're no longer number two. When the 24 report came out, we're not number two, but we're still really high in the state. Thankfully, we're not number two anymore, but we still are high. We're ranked in those blue colors that are really white and dense areas for suicide rates. So we're not out of the woods yet. We're still having lots of issues. We still need to talk about it. But it's still hidden and it's still things that we don't talk about. But mental illness is not something that happens to other people. It touches all of us. Again, it's misunderstood and there's lots of fear surrounding it. And we know that it's common and that stigma is our biggest barrier in our communities. In fact, half the people that struggle seek help. And I would think in our small communities, it's actually that number is probably more closer to three quarters of people that struggle to get the help that they need. From average, from time to onset of people having symptoms to the time they go get help is 11 years. Let's think about that if that's a broken leg. Somebody has a hairline fracture in their leg and you walk around on that for 11 years. What's gonna happen? Is it gonna get better by itself? If you're one of the fortunate people, it's gonna heal and it's gonna maybe heal stronger, right? Same thing can happen with mental illness, right? You can kind of push through and maybe come out stronger. But let's say you're not one of those unfortunate people. You can certainly heal and heal incorrectly, right? Bury that trauma. You're gonna walk around in pain for the rest of your life. You're gonna deal with that for the rest of your life. Same thing with that hairline fracture. Or unfortunately, you can do something, you can cause some damage. That leg can snap and break. Do people snap and break as well? Their mental health? We do. The same thing happens, but it takes on average 11 years for the time somebody has symptoms to actually go and get some treatments. We don't want that to be. And the biggest thing that makes that happen is stigma. In our rural communities, mental health is often considered not real, a sign of weakness, a character flaw. And we've all heard this, just pick yourself up by your bootstraps, right? Or ladies, put your big girl panties on, right? Suck it up, deal with it. That doesn't always work. Sometimes we need to do that. Sometimes we need to hear that, but that doesn't always work. Right? If it's a true mental health condition, sometimes we need other supports. We need people to come along and help us. Maybe we need some medications. We certainly need some coping skills. But we would never tell somebody that has diabetes, a broken leg or heart disease to do the same thing. Just suck it up. We wouldn't tell them that. Instead, what do we tell them?
Seek treatment.
Go to the doctor, seek treatment. And if the first one doesn't work, what do we tell them? Get a second payment. We need to do the same thing with mental health conditions. But as a community, we need to be more educated and what does mental illness even really look like? Because lots of people struggle, but we're just like, ah, that's just normal. That's just the way it is. Life's just hard. Doesn't have to be, right? There's treatment. There's things that we can do. There's things that we need to recognize. And we know what's people actually recognize that we know that we're not naive to the fact that there's other barriers, right? People struggle with transportation. There's cost of mental health treatment. If you're not able to go to Well Vance because you have private insurance, you have to find who takes my insurance. Can I afford it? And then can I get there? So we know that there's lots of other barriers involved. They tell us that the problems of mental health conditions is the same whether we live in rural communities or urban communities. But the problem is, is that living in the rural communities that we do, there's a hard time finding acceptable, available accessibility to treatment. And we know that the availability of mental health treatment is very, very limited in our rural areas. And therefore, that increases the need for our community members to realize, what does it look like when somebody even just starts to struggle? Because not everybody needs to see a counselor or therapist. Sometimes what we need is a human connection. We need somebody to listen. We need somebody to connect with us. We don't all need to go see a counselor, but we need somebody to listen to us. As a rural community, we are an underserved population, so we experience higher rates than state average in both poverty and people without health insurance. And so our areas are medically underserved in both medical and mental health and physical health treatment. And so in Michigan, the ratio of mental health providers is 360 to one. So for every one citizen we have in the state of Michigan, we have three, or every 360 citizens, we have one mental health provider. But in Ogoma County, it's 1050 to one. 1,050 people to one mental health provider. If you live in Iosco County, it's 460 to one. If you live in Ascoa County, it's 1,420 to one. So now it is that put our citizens at higher risk because we have lower availability. It also puts our providers at higher risk. Because that means their case numbers are higher and they have limited resources of who they can refer to. And so that puts them at higher risk of that secondary trauma, burnout and so all of those other things. So what we need to do is make sure that we're not only treating our citizens, but we're making sure we're taking care of our providers as well. And so again, that lack of mental health providers is that secondary vicarious trauma and that's making sure our first responders are taken care of. So not only are mental health providers, but our firefighters, our EMS, our law enforcement, because they're responding to lots of calls because of that lack of availability. And so providing mental health awareness training for them also passively impacts the way that they're able to get their needs met as well. And so we started looking at, how can we manage all of this? We can't open our doors. Their service provider is limited, but what can we do to help our communities meet some of these needs? And so we started looking and we know that SAMSA has the Center for Mental Health Services. And they are the leaders in federal efforts to promote the prevention and treatment of mental disorders. And so Congress created this with a new hope to help adults who have serious mental illness and children with emotional disorders. And they really help strengthen the nation's mental health system by helping develop different programs to increase quality and range of treatment, make it easier for people to access treatment programs, encourage or range your programs, support outreach and case management programs, and ensure that those people that are getting trained, those that are taking care of people and helping people are giving evidence-based programs. We're not just putting programs together and we think, oh, this is pretty good. We'll try this. We want them to have things that we know are tried and true, so that we're giving them programs that are good. And so they created the M-HAT, which is a mental health awareness training grant. And so that's the one that we looked at to apply for. So they train individuals like school personnel, emergency responders, law enforcement to recognize signs and symptoms of mental health disorders. Specifically, SMI or severe persistent mental illness for adults or SED, which is severe emotional disturbances for children. We want to make sure that we're providing and establishing linking schools and community-based mental health organizations and agencies to refer them to get them connected. When symptoms start, who do you refer to or do you go? So not just, you know, it's great. We recognize it. Now what do we do? But let's, what is that connection? How do we get people to where they need to go after we recognize those signs? They train emergency services personnel, law enforcement, fire departments and other people how to handle those things, to deescalate things and educate individuals about resources available in our community. And so our goal was to train over 5,000 individuals in five years. We've learned that that was a pretty lofty goal, right? And for me, it was like overwhelming and sometimes I couldn't sleep at night. So that's a little word a little bit, but we did train 675 people, I think, last year. So that's a lot in our small area. And that's three counties. But for me, I felt pretty good about that. I was pretty happy with that. And so for this year, I think we've trained over 300 something. I can give you the exact number because I'm still doing numbers for the, during this quarter to send it, but we're over 300 for this quarter, which I'm super excited about. And so we firstly wanted to look at school personnel, not just teachers, but everybody in the school, because do kids just talk to teachers? No, I talk to the secretaries. I talk to the school bus drivers, the lunch aids, all of them. So we wanted to look at all school personnel, law enforcement, emergency services, families and caregivers and service providers for those that work with veterans or have people in the military, parents and caregivers of children with youth that have severe emotional disturbances, primary care providers, youth and community members as a whole. And so what we really want to do is train them to recognize signs and symptoms of mental disorders, when to pick up on them early, what to do when they're starting to be in a crisis state, and who can they refer them to? And so then we, once we got that, we had all those goals, then we had to look at, because again, they have to be evidence-based programs and we look at, what can we be trained on? So then I got trained in all of these programs. I'm trained in adult mental health first aid. And then for the adult mental health first aid, there's ones that are specialty areas, fire and EMS corrections, public safety, which is law enforcement, veterans, older adults, and then youth mental health first aid, anybody that works with a young person under the age of 18. Teen mental health first aid, which is an awesome program. This is my first year being able to teach it. It's great. QPR, TIKTOK Assist. And then I'm also training Crisis Intermediates, Individuals with SMI for Law Enforcement. That's a program that we bought. They took, took the 40-hour CIT program. Forty hours condensed it down to eight for me and let me purchase that. We haven't been able to use that yet, but I'm working with Kirtland and I think we're gonna be able to use that actually working with Kirtland to maybe get certified in the 40-hour CIT program and bringing that to our county and seeing how we can get our law enforcement more invested in that as well. So I'm working with Kirtland on that as well. So that's exciting news for me. And I know this seems like a long list and you're like, I don't know what any of those things are. So we're gonna talk about them for a little bit. Adult mental health first aid, because it's all alphabet soup, right? It is for me too some days. Mental health first aid, really what it does is it teaches you basic skills and how to identify, understand and respond to signs and symptoms of mental health or substance use challenge. Depending on, again, where you're at, if it's adults, you're working with somebody over the age of 18. For somebody, if it's youth, you're working obviously with somebody under the age of 18. If it's a specialty one, like fire EMS corrections, law enforcement, not only do we talk about all of those things for the general population, but we talk about how does your job then impact that? How do you recognize that within yourself? Signs and symptoms of that secondary trauma? How do you recognize it within your peers as well? The evidence behind the program demonstrates that it builds mental health literacy, providing an action plan that teaches people to safely and responsibly identify and address a potential mental health or substance use challenge. It's a great program. It is an eight-hour program. So it's a great program and it is an all-day thing, but it's good and we have a lot of fun teaching it. I enjoy being there. I like doing those. So that is adult mental health first aid, youth, and it's all of those specialty ones. We'll pass past the youth one, because again, that's the same thing, but it's just for working with youth 12 to 18. The teen mental health program, on your slide, it still says grades 10 to 12. I was training this program about three years ago. And I kept, every month I had it on my thing to let national council know, this isn't helpful for us because I can't teach 10th through 12th graders, because you have to go in six times. This is a six-session course. You can't go in and interrupt 10th graders six times in their English class or in their social studies class or their math class. You have to be able to do it in their health class. In the state of Michigan, we take health in ninth grade. So finally this summer, they conceded and they let us teach it in ninth grade. So that needs to change. So in your PowerPoint, it should say ninth through 12th grade and ages 14 to 18. So I was finally able to teach it this year. I was able to go into Hale, Woodmore Prescott, Towas and Mayo. Ogoma Heights has still decided to continue with QPR and I'm hoping maybe next year they will switch to teen mental health first aid book. That's up to them. But I also taught in all of the alternative eds. So I taught in West Branch Alternative Ed, Towas and Ascoa County to bed. All have had teen mental health first aid. And actually, I'm doing it with Core right now with their adult transitioning class. They're young adults. They're 19 to 22, but I'm still teaching them teen mental health first aid to them in there right now. So we have done this program. It's been very successful. It's a great program. It's hitting the ground fast, but it's six sessions on how to help them, how to help a friend who's in. them, how to help a friend who's in crisis. So again, it's a great program. Goes right down and teaches them the basics of what mental health even is. What's a mental health crisis? And then how to respond to that. We talk about drugs, alcohol. We talk about lots of different things. And then the kids do an exit ticket at the end of every one of those things. It talks about how are you feeling today? Do you need to have any questions? Do you want to talk to me? And so I also then, part of my job is to go and I meet with lots of students. I have met with over eighty students individually over the course of this school year so far. That have said they've had questions and some of them have been serious questions. Some of them have been suicidal students. These are kids that when I talk to the school, they're like, no idea. These aren't the typical kids. And so getting them referred, and again, I forgot how frustrating it can be to get kids into services. But quickly, I had that gun and we did what we needed to do to get them where they needed to go. And some of them just needed to talk and had some questions. QPR is a two-hour suicide prevention class. And I love QPR because I can tailor it to our community needs. So when I teach this, and again, I can teach it anywhere. It can be taught to middle school age people on up. I've taught this in schools and, and again, I teach it to Ogma Heights and their health classes. I teach it to churches. I teach it to whoever will let me in. I've done it like at G's. We've done it during lunchtime. We go wherever I can go and be invited in. So it's quick two-hour class, but what I do is I start off by helping people even recognize, what are just some signs of stress? How does that exhibit? What does that look like? Let's catch people before they're even in a crisis state. And then if we get to a crisis state, how do we question, persuade and refer, which is QPR? How do we do that? What does that look like? What does that sound like? And then how do we get people to help themselves? And then what are the common causes of suicidal behavior? What are those warning signs? And then how do we refer them to where they need to go? So we talk about all of that. Again, it's a very fast-paced program. In two hours, we teach you all of that. I teach you all of that. Now, again, I'll go anywhere that anybody will let me in. Safe Talk is from Living Works. It is a four-hour suicide prevention class. And again, fifteen and older can take that class. I just did this class up in Mayo. I do their students and some of their teachers up there. Usually every year I do that class. And again, it teaches them how to use Safe Talk and we talk its different steps for the suicide process. But again, it teaches what are those signs? What are those warning signs? And what to do if you recognize somebody that you care about that may be struggling and how to refer them. And how to keep them safe for now. Assist is one of my favorite programs. It is two days. And when you talk about somebody giving up two days for a training, you're like, oh, that sounds like torture. It's really not. Everybody's like, this is the best training I've ever taken. They absolutely love it. And even our own staff, they're like, oh, you know, and I teach a lot of clinical staff members as well, but we also, I also take students sixteen and older and they'll come to this class. Mayo typically has ten students a year come to this class. They bring a bus to Rose City when we do it every year in March. It's amazing program. But again, you can learn lots of different things. Again, it's two days on how to walk somebody through. And this program, the great thing about it is it also teaches you how to do a safety plan with somebody. So it's an amazing program. I love it. But you learn how to prevent suicide by recognizing the signs, providing a skilled intervention and developing a safety plan to keep someone safe for now and alive. Crisis Intervention for Individuals with SMI for Law Enforcement. Again, that's that forty-hour program condensed out by Dr. Wolf to eight hours. He's one of the head state psychologists for the CIT program. And we haven't had a chance to use that yet, but we're hoping between us and Kirtland, we can come up with something. So I want to talk to you really quickly about Critical Incident Stress Management. When I took over the federal grants, I took Critical Incident Stress Management with a bunch of other people in our community. We took this course, I think it was seventy years ago. And I'm like, oh, this is really great. And no one wanted to take it on as our, for our community, right? And so when I took over the federal grants, I'm like, I think I want to do this. I want to start a team. I want this to be something that we do. We need to be better about taking care of us. And so they're like, you can figure out how to do that. Go ahead. You can start this team. And so we did that. We started the team. We started off with forty. I think we're down to thirteen right now, which is a little bit of a struggle. Sometimes it's hard. But we're the mighty team of thirteen. But it's what critical incident does is it manages any traumatic incident in our community. And so not only will we talk to those primary victims, but mainly critical incident is for those secondary people. It's for the law enforcement. It's for the EMS. It's for the social workers. It's for all the secondary people that have to deal with that trauma on a secondary basis. And what it does is it helps make sure that we're taking care of all of those people so that we can continue to do what we do to take care of those primary people. Critical Incident Stress Management is a process that focuses solely on an immediate and identifiable problem. It can include pre-incident preparedness to an acute crisis management to post-crisis follow-up. So if when we lose a student at a school, we have a team, they'll call me Sunday night, three o'clock, nine o'clock at night. So you need to be there at seven o'clock tomorrow morning. My job is then to call my team members and get a team and we're there. And then when I'm there, I'm helping the school, how do we manage social media? How do we make those phone calls? What do we do? How do we notify students? How do we notify staff? How do we manage all of that? And then we're not only supporting students, but we're supporting staff as well. And then we do the formal debriefing for those that show up on that scene for fire EMS, law enforcement. Sometimes certain departments are harder to get to the table than others, but we're getting there. We're building some bridges. With our local Ogma EMS, we already have a protocol. If there's certain cases, certain things that happen, we automatically call in for a debriefing, which is great. And we're working on that with our other community partners as well. So we will do all of those things. But CISM is designed to help people deal with their trauma, one incident at a time, by allowing them to talk about the incident when it happens without judging or criticism. And actually, when we talk about it, it's protected by law. It's legislation. What happens in that room stays in that room. We can't be called into court. No notes are taken. Nobody can talk about what happens in that room outside of that room. It is protected by law. Nothing can be said outside of there. So it's helping individuals deal with normal reactions to an abnormal event. And I remind them when they walk in the door, you're not going to leave all warm and fuzzy. That's not what happens. But what happens is we take it from here, out here, and I let people have time and space to process it. And then they can put it back up here and your brain no longer processes it as a trauma. Your brain now processes as a learning experience. And so it's different. It doesn't mean that it doesn't hurt. It doesn't mean that it wasn't hard. It doesn't mean that it's still not going to trip you up occasionally, that you're not going to think about it. But some of those cases are hard. I mean, I've said on all of those debriefings are hard. But what it means though, is that your brain now isn't going to get traumatized by it and you can continue to do the work that you do. And you can continue to show up and do what you do. And that's important. So anybody can benefit from a CISM. If you've had a traumatic event, something happens. You know, we've been called for bank robberies. We've been called for car accidents. We've been called for lots of different things. There's a wide range of things. We've been called just because somebody unexpectedly dies on a team somewhere in a business. And so we will go in and we will help that team process that. And again, all of the people on my team have been certified. They've been trained. They've all had to attend a three-day training. And so they do that. And we meet on a quarterly basis to make sure we're keeping up on our skills and doing the things that we need to do. A CISM takes typically an hour to two hours, depending on how many people are there, how things are going, how things are processing. We kind of just ask a few questions and then the team kind of, however long it takes them, how long it takes them. So we let them kind of do their thing. And then we stay as long as after as we need to and we will continue to follow up as long as we need to. There is no expense. It's free and it's all confidential. And like I said, we can't even talk about it outside of that room because it's protected by law and legislation. And the great thing about what I want us to remember is in those moments when we're brave enough to share our own thoughts with a fellow griever and they nod and smile and understand, that is when we know we're not alone. And that's the biggest part. Is to know we're not alone in those moments, when we're struggling, when we're having a hard time processing the scene or going through something that I know it's our job, right? That's what we do. But it's still hard sometimes. And when we know we're not alone and we're having normal feelings, makes it a little bit easier as well. And so if you are ever in need of a career confidential consultation to talk about or discuss a CISM, you can always feel free to give me a call and you can talk about that. We set them up. We usually try to wait one to three days, but even if there's a crisis happening, I will just kind of come in and we will do, do what's called a diffusing, which is just kind of helping staff deal with it, with it at that moment. Remind them of healthy coping skills. I remind them, how are you going to respond tonight when everybody starts picking, right? Everybody kind of comes out of the woodwork. We're a really small community. They know you work someplace, especially at a school or something and something happens. Your second cousin twice removed comes out and suddenly they're concerned about your well-being because they want to know what happened. So how do we come up with a common response to even respond to that? So I help people even type things in their cell phones, a message. What are you, how are you going to respond to all those text messages tonight? It's not anything, but it helps people get through that day. And so we do that. It's part of the things that we do, things that people don't think about, but we do on a regular basis. So I'm even willing to come in those days with a formal debriefing will take place in about one to three days. But we're able to provide the support that we need. So you're asking, what is my role as a community member? All this seems so great, but what, what does that have to do with me? So you can request a training at any point in time. If you're involved in a group or a church or an organization and you think we could do a QPR, it's two hours, train our staff or train our members of this group. I could come in, work weekends, nights. Tons of hours. I break trainings up, you know, fire departments, we do fire and EMS. I do two hours every Monday night. So as long as we get it done, you know, we work it out. You can participate in a training and you can also request a CISM intervention at any time that you would need one. The main goal is is to gather as a community that we increase our knowledge, our confidence and our helping behaviors to help reduce the stigma. Any questions? Comments?
Um, I don't have any questions. I know you spoke at a MTA meeting within the last eight, nine months. And I really appreciated you being there. And obviously we all know that mental health is a big, big problem. It's only getting worse.
Yes.
So greatly appreciate what you do and your team, team does. And, and thank you for coming here tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me.
Mr. Scott?
No, I don't have any.
Mr. Serbuk?
Thank you, Diane. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I think awareness is, is part of the battle. So thank you for being here. Thank you. Uh, correspondence, we received them from Lewis Balance Amtrak Service in Northern Michigan, Well Vance Media Hosting. Those have been received and filed consent agenda. You just want to take these individually? Uh, nine A, resolution to accept ban purchase quote. This resolution is sponsored by probate court judge Scott Williams. Probate court in front of the court employees and volunteers need to have access to a county owned vehicle to fulfill obligations related to juveniles supervision and care. A twenty twenty-two Ford Transit Connection transport van that was formerly used for this purpose was involved in a traffic accident is no longer usable. Approval of the resolution will authorize purchase of a twenty twenty-five Chrysler Voyager at a cost not to exceed forty-one thousand dollars. Costs associated with this purchase will be paid through a combination of insurance settlement funds and childcare fund unrestricted fund balance. Someone want to entertain that?
Make a motion that we approve the resolution.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Judge Williams, you have the floor.
Well, he pretty much just said it all. Our twenty-two Cross Connect van that we bought in two thousand twenty-two for the Juvenile Services Department. Involved in the accident. There's no major injuries, just soreness. Bad news is not so good for the van. I worked with Tim, the insurance company totaled it, obviously. Insurance company cut a check or I think it was just under twenty-eight thousand dollars. I my first step was seeing what's out there. And I quickly found that used minivans started about fifty or sixty thousand miles for some reason. I was unable to find any under thirty-six thousand where a warranty would still be in place. I also found that most used, most minivans are previously rental vans. By checking Carfax, about seven or eight different ones. That led me to see, well, what's the cheapest? The only US companies now that make minivans are Chrysler. They make a Chrysler Pacifica and the Voyager. So I scanned the internet. Team Hodges actually has a base Voyager. So I went and got a price from them, best they can do. And actually Chrysler is having an employee pricing for everybody right now. So that worked out all right. And I was also in Bay City last weekend and got a base price on a Pacifica from Thalen. Which is a little cheaper, but obviously Hodges is an Ogma County business. So, but I'd asked if you consider either one of these. And I checked at five o'clock today, they were both still on the website. So I think they're both still there. But I would ask, ask the court or the commission to allow me to put a deposit down on my, I guess with my credit card and get all the final payment and paperwork done and get it, get it purchased. So any questions is fine. I think a warranty is the right way to go at this point. And four, four doesn't make transit connect anymore. So that's kind of off the table. Limited to Voyager or the Pacifica if I don't go to the Hondas and Toyotas and Kia's and stuff like that. So that's all I have really. If you have any questions.
Do you have any questions?
I do not have any questions.
Comments?
Oh, and sorry. And the, the difference between the price and the insurance check, the fund balance for the probate court childcare fund. Would, I'd ask for the commission to allow us to pay the difference out of that.
What's the current unrestricted balance fund?
A lot more than that. I, I was just wondering to look into leasing.
I haven't. We, we only put probably eight.
Right. I, I saw the miles and it, it looks like it's below the twelve thousand that usually is. And then we could have a current van every four years. We could have another new van.
Certainly look into that. I was, like I say, I just went with, it's an asset that they would have and only put eight to ten thousand a year on it. We use it most of the summer for transport juvenile community service and stuff like that, but.
Just, just wondering, you know, I, I know in other applications we got higher mileage, but you don't. So I'm just thinking, could we every four years have a new vehicle? And with, with a warning. Always have a warning.
He's good. I mean, don't get me wrong.
Because at, at eight thousand a year, you might go ten years and we only got eighty thousand, but we won't have
Thirty-six thousand.
We won't have a
Three years, I'll be out of warranty, but it shouldn't only have twenty-five thousand miles on it.
Right.
That's why I don't want to hold it up any more than what it is, you know? You've got those units. Other than that, I'd be for Hodges.
Commissioner Wiltie?
I think Mr. Scott brings up a good point. I know I've been vehicle shopping lately, so there are a lot of good leases right now. It is nice to have that warranty. One question I have is between the Voyager, the Pacifica, you feel like the Voyager is just a little better?
They're bad. To me, they look like the same car, the same. I mean, I didn't test drive them obviously, but I own a Pacifica actually. And we took it to Massachusetts last year and right, really nice. It looked very much the same. The features are very much the same. I quite frankly, don't know, I know what the difference is. I think that the Pacifica might have a few more base options. But both these ones I got quotes for basically the lowest. I mean, they don't have TVs in them or roofs or anything like that.
They have what you need.
Made with the third row seats. So so I honestly couldn't tell you the difference because they almost looked the same to me. So.
Yeah. What are you doing right now since there is no vehicle?
And mileage.
The, the people are using their own vehicles and we're paying mileage.
What was that, Tim?
Got your answer on the fund balance. The last auto was four hundred and seventy-nine thousand forty-two dollars. I think we'll cover it. Yeah.
I mean, is there a doubt? Is there a reason that we couldn't lease? I mean, I don't, I don't care either way. I obviously we need a vehicle, but it is an option, a pretty good option.
I think the lease is a great idea.
If I can certainly check it out.
I mean, that's a great idea.
I mean, if you can authorize.
And how would?
I don't want to have to wait another month to get to it.
Right.
Agree.
There, there are up to the same level. Yeah, there are programs out there where municipalities do this. So that's not an uncommon thing. I don't think it would be very hard to locate somebody who could help you. You know, with all the logistics of that. I did want to point out too, we did look at the four MyDeal contracts as well, but the pricing that the judge received was beat even the MyDeal. Of course, it's a used vehicle versus new, but it's still, you know, it's, I think a better choice.
We, I looked at the prices for the state contracts. Actually, these are better prices than all, than that. So as far as the purchase price, I don't know about leasing. So I'm not sure.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
Could we still approve this resolution? I mean, if the leases come back in their, in the ballpark we need it. I mean, I really do think we all agree the lease probably would be best. Couldn't we approve this up to this amount? And so like the judge says, this is not going to hold them up anymore. This is important for them to get this as soon as possible.
Right. I'll reword the resolution to, you know, allow that searching for lease, the cap on the pricing will just remain the same. Of course, you're going to have a different number.
I can, tomorrow afternoon, I can go to Hodges and see what, we'll see what that comes out at or probably the same vehicle, twelve thousand a year or whatever.
Just the financing is the difference. They'll probably give you the same vehicle, but just finance it differently.
At least my personal medical, I know, but I don't know how.
And that works out good for you, right?
You drive it.
You're driving a new car every four years.
Every two years.
Two years.
You don't foresee an issue with this, correct, Judge Williams?
I'm sorry.
You don't have an issue with, with going to get more information on leasing? You're okay with that?
I just don't have to come back a month later.
Agreed.
Have both those options be gone.
No, we don't want.
Agreed. So can you reword this for us?
So it'll, it'll read, you know, purchase this or lease.
And I'll get with you as soon as I know that you can make phone calls and see what you believe wants to open. Ten thousand maybe miles a year. I don't know what, somewhere around there. That should be more than enough based on our entire usage, but.
Yeah.
We'll get a price on that.
Does someone want to alter the current?
I will amend my motion to include the language or lease.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any further discussion? Roll call vote. Jenny David. Yes. Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You can do.
Thank you.
Item seven V, uh, excuse me, item ninety, right, resolution to appoint members to the Veteran Affairs Committee. This resolution is sponsored by the Veteran Affairs Committee and Veterans Affairs Director Jeff Nichols. The Board of Commissioners establish a Veteran Affairs Committee as set forth in the County Departments of Veteran Affairs Act. Committee members appointed by the board consist of four veterans appointed for terms of four years. Committee matter Mark DeBoer resigned from the committee effective on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five and the term. Of the committee member Donald Card will expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. Approval of the, approval of the resolution will appoint Vivian. Crack, crackle, crackla, crackla. Pardon me? To the Veteran Affairs Committee for the unexpired term of Mark DeBoer through April thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight and reappoint Donald Card to a term to expire on April thirtieth, twenty twenty-nine.
Motion to approve the resolution is presented.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Is anybody on the phone that can add to this?
Do you have a phone there?
I don't see him. Do you know anything about this, Tim?
Uh, I do know the process they went through with, uh, Veterans Affairs. They're very thorough in vetting their, uh, applicants. And, uh, may have complete faith in their recommendations.
Anybody in the room want to add to that?
Vivian's been very active with the.
I see their, so their information's on her.
I did. I seen it. I was just wondering for a proper. punctuation of that last name because I'm pretty sure I didn't get it right. I'm pretty sure I didn't get it right, but anything else, uh, all in favor, say aye. Pardon me?
Croca.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion carries. Item nine C, resolution to approve renewal of a software license agreement. This resolution is sponsored by Administrator slash Controller Timothy Delahoney. On June eleventh, twenty twenty, the Board of Commissioners approved Resolution twenty dash zero five. To accept an annual licensing agreement with Seamless Docs, now known as GovOSS. The GovOSS application provides a secure, cost-effective green initiative su- solution with improved time efficiency for county staffing. Creating online forums or surveys. County officials are generally satisfied with the Seamless Doc platform. Which facilitated processing thousands of documents each year since twenty twenty. Proof of the resolution will authorize a one-year license agreement with that, with GovOSS at an annual cost of ten thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars and eighteen cents. Through June fourteenth, twenty twenty-six.
Is that the right pronunciation of that?
I don't know. I'd like to make the resolution to approve the renewal of the software licensing agreement.
Motion Commissioner Wiltie?
Support.
Support from Commissioner Serbuk. Tim, can you explain this?
Yeah, this is the material that you see occasionally in your inbox where we're reporting things like position allocation requests or maybe a budget amendment. Uh, we do an awful lot of internal forms this way. It is definitely more efficient. It doesn't produce paper. Uh, which is what got us into this in the first place. And a couple of you might remember when we were in the throes of COVID and were under orders to. Have all of our employees check in before getting into the building. Uh, this became quite useful. We ended up having over ten thousand. Forms completed by our employees, uh, without ever producing a single sheet of paper. And this is after about one drawer was already filled. With the papers that were being filled out. Uh, that's a more, um, dramatic. Uh, example, but, uh, I think it really drives home the point of not having the paper. It does produce a PDF document. Which is searchable on the, uh, database that's created. So if we ever needed to look at, uh, you know, employee X who checked in in October. We could find it and it would be very quick, a lot quicker than going through a file, uh, drawer full of papers. Uh, but, uh, the efficiencies on the other hand, on the budget amendments that we do at administrative level, on some of the purchases that we do, a couple of you had, uh. Administrative contracts this last couple of weeks that you were able to do. Uh, it just moves things along so much more efficiently. Uh, that I, I can't say enough for it. Uh, and I know we don't use this to the maximum extent. There are just many other features. Maybe one day we'll get into it. For instance, we could, uh, uh, do zoning permits, uh, complete with a pay option. Uh, over this, if we wanted to get in that deep. And I think eventually we will. Uh, so again, a lot more utility to it than even we've realized at this stage. But again, I can't say enough positive about it and, and how. I think it's improved our operation all the way around.
Uh, how much is the cost went up from twenty twenty to?
Uh, it was a couple of hundred dollars, uh, is all. And, um, we just came off from a five-year contract. Where we really didn't increase a whole lot, even during that period. Maybe it was a three-year. I don't remember, but, uh, it's very, um, um. I think cost effective that way. I, I'm going to say it was a little over two hundred dollar difference.
Comments, Commissioner Serbuk? Commissioner Scott?
Working fine for me.
Commissioner Wiltie?
No comment.
Uh, roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie. Yes.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes. Item nine D, Parks and Rec Credit Card.
Uh, a couple of years ago, uh. Well, the commission located a credit card for Parks and Rec Committee, because expenses that occur at the. RV Park mostly, but sometimes the nature park. And now we've taken on, um. The park at the High Banks, um, Commissioner Simmons was the, uh, in, in the past, uh, it's got commissioner asked to hold it. Or county employee. So, uh, Commissioner Vaughn had it. When we first started, Commissioner Simmons had it in the last two, last term. And now, uh, uh, vote the today's meeting, uh, put myself in it. So we need a board approval to have the card assigned to me. So I'll make a motion to have the. Commission approve myself holding the card for Arts and Rec.
You want to make it or should someone else? I think so.
Okay, somebody else can do it then. I'll make the motion that. I'm sitting on Parks and Rec two. I will, uh, make the motion that the credit card be issued to Commissioner Scott for safekeeping.
With support.
Motion Commissioner Serbuk, support from Commissioner Wiltie, discussion. What's the, uh, what's the card limit on that?
Thousand, two thousand, a thousand, two thousand.
I think it's between one and two thousand.
Is it? Okay. I promise I won't go.
And that expires, that'll expire when your term expires?
Yes, I guess, or, or off the committee.
Okay. Either or, or both, or how do you want that to, that's a motion?
Well, I didn't make it. You wouldn't let.
Would someone like to add to that, like?
For him to hold the card until either the expiration of his term or his. Departure from the Parks and Rec Committee. One or the other, whichever comes first.
We have an addendum to the motion with someone like, do you also put that, Commissioner Wiltie?
I will support that.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Mark Serbuk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Item nine E, claims. We have claims in the amount of a hundred ninety thousand, one hundred dollars and seventy-nine cents. Would someone like to make a motion? I will. I did claims.
You ensure you can do that?
Someone like to?
I'll support your motion.
We have motion with support. Commissioner Mayhew and I, uh, reviewed claims this past week. How that looks fairly large. But some things that, uh, I had reached out to Tracy as well as I had some questions. There's jail housing on this totaled forty-one thousand ninety-six dollars and thirty-one cents. Parks and Rec had something now for three thousand nine hundred and twenty-three hundred and eighty-seven cents. Prosecuting attorney had software updates for nine thousand three hundred and fifty dollars. Uh, District Health Department had thirty-two thousand three hundred and ninety-seven dollars. Humane Society, there was two, um, payments in there for twelve thousand five hundred dollars. There was an extra policy taken out under the ARPA. Um, I'd asked her about that because I wasn't sure what that was related to, kind of a safety. Uh, they wanted with all the, uh, renovations going on.
Builder's risk, yeah.
Yep. Uh, consumers, just as again, those, uh, electric bills always for some reason, uh, catch my attention. Eight thousand nine hundred and fifteen dollars for this building. It's a lot of money. Um, and then insurance bonds, there was an accident fund for eleven thousand nine hundred and twenty-seven dollars. So them are the. Questions, nothing else really jumped out at, uh, me specifically. So.
I saw where there was, uh, a couple of payments like a May, uh, a March and April payment for different things. So that was the animal shelter.
Twelve thousand five hundred, there's two months on there.
And I see we got hit on, uh, workman's comp premium. That's a monthly, isn't it? I think that's monthly. Is that a monthly? I think that eleven thousand is a monthly.
That was the audit amount.
I asked you on that today, didn't I? I don't remember what that.
End of the year, they, they did our actual, uh, year to what the estimated was and we were over, so we ended up paying.
I asked you on that today and I don't remember where I wrote it at. Yeah, I. That's a lot of questions. Haven't done claims in a while, so it's nice again to get familiar and. I'll be bugging Tracy for a little while, some updates and reminders and what's this?
Sorry.
Any other questions, comments? Roll call vote. Mark Serbuk.
Yep.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David. Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Unfinished business. Uh, Tom, uh, Tom, geez, Tim, the time clock with you, are you, are you going to address it under your administrator's controller report? A little update on that or?
Again?
Okay, I guess I will cover it under there. Um, any other, any unfinished business, commissioners?
No, I have none. No.
None. Uh, eleven Administrator slash Controller's Report.
I have to see that, uh, my written report is not among your documents tonight. You will see that probably at the next regular meeting. Uh, so you'll have a full month's worth on there, but lots to say tonight. First, to remind everybody, your next meeting is a committee to hold, but it's also our annual equalization meeting, which needs to have to be on a Tuesday. So Tuesday, the fifteenth, uh, five-thirty right here. And, uh, Randy will lead it off with the equalization report. So we will get that statutory obligation out of the way, but bring a lunch. Uh, we have a number of presentations. We'll start with Jack Morris Construction. We'll be here to talk about the window project. And I know Commissioner Wiltie had brought this up a meeting or two ago. Uh, so we'll talk about the windows and what their intentions are and what to do. Uh, I suspect there might be a change order or two. You'll want to talk about when they're finished, but we'll, we'll see. Well, let's get the, uh, conversation going and, and find out. Uh, we also will have, uh, presentation from Diebold, uh, Insurance, our insurance, um, representative. Just talking in general about the insurances we have, uh, being said, we're going to be going into the twenty twenty-six budget cycle. This is a kind of a big budget item, uh, every year. So they'll talk about just in general what we're covered, uh, and maybe even talk about, uh. Couple of areas where they might think we are lacking in coverage. Uh, I don't think you're going to find much, but, uh, also talk about some of these specialty insurances that we've had over the years, like our cybersecurity. Uh, which is becoming more and more prevalent among municipalities. Bethany Verbal will be here from Maynard Castrian to talk about her internal control report. Uh, she will have the final report, but there are a number of policies that are being recommended, uh, in the appendices that you'll want to really, uh. Uh, familiarize yourselves with because I'm going to start rolling those out now as we go through our budget process. Uh, just some things to shore up what we're doing and maybe even streamline a couple of processes. And then finally, Mark DeBoer, who is, uh, the individual who is, uh, resigning from the Veterans Committee will be here to talk about a project. Uh, with the tree over at the Veterans Memorial across the street. Uh, he's got some concerns about his, uh, expected life. And, uh, some ideas on, on how they might, uh, you know, perhaps remove that tree and put something else in its place. But, um, I'll let him, uh, get into the specifics of that when he gets here. Uh, so yeah, bring a lunch. Um. Chair asked about the time clock situation. I did get a, uh, a message from the county attorney. I don't know, it might have arrived yesterday or the day before. But I've been gone, so I got to read it this morning. Uh, we had, uh, negotiated in the, uh, new, uh. Court unit contract with the Teamsters, the use of the, the UKG time system. And that's what we're mostly familiar with is when documents, when employees are, are checking in for the day and checking out. Uh, that is kind of in place at the moment. We've run into some difficulties with the programmers at UKG. Uh, to the point, and you know, Tracy's here and can probably testify to the frustration, but had, I'm going to just guess. Probably not their most senior employees working on it. And, uh, Tracy, if I'm mistaken, let me know. But I think we ended up undoing everything they did and starting over at one point. Um, now, those frustrations aside. Well, they were not yet ready to let us go live with that, with our court unit. But when they do go live, everything that we've, uh. Uh, experienced with our other hourly employees today will be available now to the courts. They can punch in on their, uh, workstations. They can punch in. At a time clock if they want to, uh, either, all those benefits will be there and we'll be able to accurately. Clock the time, if you will, but also again, and I've said this probably a nauseam, you may be tired of me hearing it. But assures that we're compliant with the Fair Labor Standards Act when it comes to things like overtime pay. Uh, those are the areas if we are going to get into trouble, they're the ones that were, that are going to crop up. So if an employee is owed overtime, even if it's fifteen minutes, they'll be paid that overtime. We will avoid any scrutiny that may come from a wage and hour audit, which would, if we did not pass, uh, come with its own set of fines. And, and other payments that we really don't want to have to make. Uh, and also I'm finding it an excellent to, tool to evaluate, um, where our staff is working, how many hours they're working there. Uh, it's a great, uh, planning tool as well. So, uh, looking forward to a full implementation on that, uh. Not tomorrow, but very soon now, but at least, uh, the, the courts are able to record their times now. So when we come in, they're recording their times, it isn't the push button quite yet, but it, it is coming. Uh, we're also talking about that with other, uh, our, um. Deputy contract that we just approved has similar language, uh, similar things. They've actually done, there's some testing there. So we have a pretty good idea that things are being. Uh, costed to the right activity center. In the sheriff, for instance, you might have, uh, an officer that's working road patrol. Might also work school resource, separate categories that they can punch so that when it does come into payroll, it's ready to go. We don't have to try to process and break all that apart anymore. So that's moving along. Um, any questions on that?
I, I do because I actually brought this up because I, uh, read your email today and then I had called on these claims. So I was asking a few questions and I was, because I was very much confused by the email. Um, that I received. And then when I asked further questions about it, I was even more confused. So Tracy, do you mind coming up just to make sure that we're all on the same page? Because it's definitely not how I'm understanding it. But I just want to make sure.
Just scoring?
If you, if you don't mind, just giving us an all update because that email to me sounded like they were clocking in, weren't clocking in. But then how I, I, the explanation I got is they're actually manually still, they're just writing it down.
So courts have been ready. Um, they were ready to go to the punching system for probably a month, month and a half. Um, I got the order to not assign it. So it's ready. All I have to do is assign it to them. What they have been doing for the last pay period, this pay period and the last one is recording manually typing in eight thirty to twelve and one to. So they're at least putting what times they're coming in.
They're doing a daily basis.
Um. Most of them.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, and there was a few that hadn't, um, had a few entries in today when I did a few fact checks, but.
Yeah.
I, I guess again, that wasn't what we, I, I had thought was happening.
Matt's on the, or on the Zoom too and can connect because he's the one that actually, you know, talked to the courts at the request of the board. Um, I also spoke with Mike LaFave today, uh, and my understanding is exactly as I explained it to you. But, um, we just aren't fully there yet. I mean, people cannot at this point sit down at their work.
They can if I assign them that time card. We, I haven't been told to assign them that time card yet. It's ready. The. The court, the only issue I have right now is there are accruals, which I think as of yesterday, um, they've all been fixed. So that's been the frustrating part with the court as they just, instead of just changing a number or two on the new accruals. For va- vacation and their personal, somehow something got totally reconfigured. So they kind of had to start over on that one and. Fix the accruals, but I've been printing reports and keeping track of where everybody's supposed to be. So. And Michael has done a great job as well, keeping track of his. And Michael has done a great job as well, keeping track of his employees, so we kind of, I think we got the balances fixed as of yesterday.
Matt, do you wanna add anything to this or would you please? Hi.
Hi, how are you? Can you hear me?
Ten, go ahead.
So just wanted to indicate that yes, I received an email from Michael indicating that the courts are um. Entering time as recommended by me. Um you know, as a separate employer, the courts get to manage how they do it. They do have a provision in their collective bargaining agreement that says they'll use the county's timekeeping system. I think we're just making our way into that transition. I can follow up with them about the mechanism of it, but my understanding is. From the overarching um discussion that we had, they are changing the methodology for entry. That is consistent with what the county would like to see for processing payroll, which is that the time is entered when somebody's in and the time is entered when somebody leaves. Instead of, and I I can't verify this is happening, but the concern was that somebody came in in the morning and wrote down eight to five. Um for that day before they'd actually left.
So I guess my, my question is if the system's there for, for when they log in to hit the time in and time out. Why, why are we, uh that's what I thought was going to happen for numerous reasons.
Yeah.
For liability reasons, for. We have the system.
Yeah, again, based on the conversation, I have a mic this afternoon, and I'm pretty confident that's ultimately what's gonna happen. Because it's so much easier than getting in and trying to type your time in. Literally, you click on a button, you're done, you're out, you move on. Uh and it's super easy. Uh I think um it might even be a point where a few people might say, you know what? It's just easier to put my finger on that time clock and check into, because it's so easy. Again, the complication of, alright, I'm gonna call up my uh um dashboard. And I'm gonna get into the, the right week, the right paid period, and if it been a number, I could have done three or four of these by the time I'm done. So I, I think quickly people are gonna realize the, the utility of it too. Uh so ultimately, um I believe we're gonna get compliance with probably most, if not everyone.
I guess, correct me if, and then, correct me if I'm wrong, it, it sounded like the big issue with really initiating this was the fluctuating times with courts, with lunches, staggering times. And I totally understand that. I guess my question to you, and maybe you can answer this, Tracy, I don't know, is since they started this, what your email said about a month ago, three, four weeks ago. Are you seeing uh times that are being put in manually with fluctuating lunches and courts and?
I did, I just did a few spot checks in your call today, so yeah, um I think some do twelve to one and some do one to two. Kind of thing.
Michelle Wiltsey.
Yeah, um Commissioner David, I'm mirroring your concerns and so. I'm a little confused at the fact, so right now there's a, there were software issues, sounds like company didn't have the. People that were competent enough to do the work. So is that the main reason we're not at where we need to be? Or are we still, even once we get to that point, it's still just a matter of whether you want to use a system or not use a system?
The system will be used. I'm, there's no question about that. And if I'm hearing Tracy right, it sounds like the software issues are now behind us.
So what happens is when we started, when we switched to this company, I worked with an actual programmer. So they pretty much dedicate their time, whatever hours a week, Tim and I said, and on this programming every week. Sometimes twice a week. Um now, what happens when I have to make a change of some sort, I just email support. So I think there's different texts, there's support texts and there's programming texts and. The programmer knows all of the backside of it, let's say. I mean, Sheriff, for instance, has all kinds of different rules, you know, whether they work on a holiday, they get, you know, premium pay, if they have field training pay. There's just a lot of. Things that have to work together. So when you email the programmer and say, hey, this isn't showing up right, they may change something, but it might affect. Everything else on the time card, so we don't catch it until it happens, it comes over to payroll and it's not right. And then we have to call back and say this didn't work right, so I think that's the issue right now is that whenever something's wrong. Or even these new ones, I just email support and I said, hey, we have a new time card rule I have to have created and supports doing it rather than a programmer. So I did talk to a programmer last week, I believe I had a Zoom call with the support and the programmer. So it, it worked a little bit better, trying to explain the details.
So if you're giving the okay, this is okay moving forward, glitches are fixed.
For the court time card, yes, Sheriff, we have three deputies that are um testing it and there's still lots of issues, so. That hasn't been converted over a hundred percent, but the, the person I'm working with on that, he's going to create one. A new one and we're just kind of gonna implement it as we go and see if we can build that one from the beginning, because it's changing too much of. Jail and Sheriff are both on it, and we don't have a contract yet for jail to use that kind of system, so it's a lot. But yes, I, Tim, both Tim and I have the authority to change what time card each employee uses. Whether it be a punch or manual entry, whatever, and we're the only ones that can do that.
You guys are initiating it, thank you.
Uh yes, I do appreciate the work that deputies are doing right now, because we're finding a lot.
Gotta get the bugs worked out.
Is voluntarily.
Fantastic, thank you. That is appreciated.
Thank you for being.
Other comments, commissioners? Thanks. Uh elected, were you done, Tim? Any questions for Tim? I'm sorry.
I better be. I've got a, a shopping list here, but I don't think I need to. Talk anymore, I mean, I'll just make sure that the report's even more thorough than usual.
Any questions for Tim?
I mean, I understand we're here, if there's anything that's important, it's time for us to hear it.
Uh nothing that's uh critical. Um we will be doing our second quarter budget adjustments. But with this moving of our meeting to uh Tuesday, uh may or may not be ready on Tuesday, but we will get to it in April. If we need some extra time, we can do it, but you'll be updated on where things stand. The spoiler alert is, it's, it's looking uh like everything's on track. We do have some tweaks we're gonna need to do, but nothing that's outrageous. Thanks.
Elected officials and department head reports. Clark? Sheriff? MSU.
Yeah.
Oh gosh. Come on out.
Hi, I'm Julie Darden. I'm the district director for MSU Extensions District Four, which includes Ogama County. I look back and it's been two months since I saw you all at strategic planning and I regret that I haven't seen you recently. But you're not having meetings right outside my office anymore, so apologize for having been absent for a little while. Um I started making a list of things that I wanted to share with you and it's quite extensive, and I know I talk fast, but I'll hit the highlights. Um first of all, for Ogama County four H, um we have had a babysitting training happening. Uh last Saturday was, you know, basically how to take care of kids. Um so we're training youth that are interested in learning how to, you know, maybe start a babysitting business. Um how to safely care for kids in their care and, you know, how to keep them engaged and safe while they're there. This Saturday, um youth will be finishing that um session up with learning CPR in first aid. So we're really excited to have a partnership with My Michigan, who's um doing the training uh for the youth. Um we also started a cross stitch club this winter um that is ongoing. And then um we still have live stock clubs and events going on. Um our shooting sports, archery wrapped up, wrapped up. Um and that was a really successful effort, and if we get more volunteers, we could expand into other shooting sports disciplines. Um and we'd be happy to do that. There is a training coming up if people want to volunteer to become screened. Um the training is coming up in May, um and we have a pretty, we have a two-day training that we require for all of our shooting sports instructors. Regardless of what they're doing, and it's really to cover all the safety elements that we, that we insist upon when we have youth engaged in shooting sports. Um we have an upcoming fisheries workshop for Saginaw Bay, and I realize that Ogama County doesn't uh, doesn't border Saginaw Bay. But it's, it's a very important uh water, body of water that is only thirty miles roughly from, from our uh west ranch specifically. And closer, depending on where you live in this, in the county. Um we have spring fisheries workshops happening all over through our C-grant uh staff. Um so the Saginaw Bay Fisheries Workshop is happening April twenty second from six to eight P M. People can go to that in person if they'd like to, in Standish at the Saginaw Tribal Center, or they can participate via Zoom. Um from the comfort of their own home. Um and there will be, uh so it's a hybrid meeting, trying to make sure that we're accessible to as many people as we can. That will talk about the health of the fishery, like how, how are, how is the Saginaw Bay as a habitat for fish? And for anglers, um it'll talk about efforts to restore Lake Sturgeon. Um and uh the Saginaw Bay, you know, just the health of the bay itself, you know, are we successfully keeping the bay up? A, a good environment for humans, for, for wildlife, for, for um, you know, property owners and people who just like to enjoy the bay. Um we'll also be talking about the habitat and resilience of the habitat and some efforts to address the Channel Island reef. Um which, you know, there have been questions about restoration and there'll be update opportunities there. Um and then Michigan D N R, who is a partner with us on all of these efforts, will be giving their management updates. So if they change mits or sizes or um things like that, um that will be updated there. And the flyer that I have includes fisheries updates for all of the other bodies of water, all the other Great Lakes um environments. So there's a session on, you know, northern Huron, uh Lake Huron, uh up near Cedarville. Um different areas in Lake uh Michigan and Lake Erie and um, and then statewide, uh Lake Superior as well. So um if people are interested in that, I recognize a lot of people like to travel to fish, so your local body of water may not be your favorite. Um we, I did a strategic planning effort with the Economic Development Corporation of uh of Ogama County. And um that was really successful and we're following that up this month at their next meeting. Um getting into, you know, we got high level goals and we'll be getting into objectives and strategies with that group. And I'm really happy to be able to provide that. Um honestly, it was a joy to work with that group. We're very engaged and lots of great ideas. Um in the realm of education around um uh agriculture. Uh spring is the time when everybody wants to get their soil tested, and it's also the time of year when we do education for farmers. On our pesticide safety uh requirements, so if you want to buy a pesticide in Michigan, there are certain categories of those. If there's one with a restricted use, you have to pass a test uh given by the Michigan Department of Agriculture and Rural Development. Um Michigan State has partnered for decades, delivering the education that's required for that. Um what we've been able to do is partner with M Dard to offer the training and a lunch and the test all in one day. So that people don't have to, you know, if they're here in West Ranch taking the test, which they did in March, they don't have to leave and try to find their own lunch. They can come, get the education, have lunch, take the test, hopefully pass, um and then they can have their certification. Um and that's really important when the, when the exam was held here in West Ranch, and I don't know the last time it was held in West Ranch. Um but we had twenty-six people show up to take the exam in the annex and uh we're gonna continue to host that testing here. Um uh and I'll be advocating for that. Um Phil's been very busy. He is currently in Washington DC as part of a uh um nationwide um conference. For the Joint Council of Extension Professionals, we have professional development organizations with, within extension nationally. Um and they have a public issues leadership development, so essentially teaching extension staff how to talk to elected officials. So he'll be doing some visits um on Capitol Hill with our elected officials and talking about the work that we do. And the way that our research, extension and teaching positively impacts communities. Um and we're really proud that we can be represented by someone like Phil and our colleagues there. Um and it's really important that we share that story, because the research that we generate um is informed by the people in communities. And the needs that they have, and then is delivered back to other people who can benefit from that learning. Um and so he also did a carcass meeting at the annex. I'll explain what that is. Looking at the quality of beef through an analysis of the carcass and comparison of that. So I didn't stay for that, um but uh really looking at how are producers maintaining high quality? In the, in the beef that they're producing. Um and he also did um some education that he traveled around with another educator. From the Upper Peninsula, Frank Wardinsky, and they did something called a beef brawl. Phil's great at naming things, and um the beef brawl is two competing visions of how to manage a beef herd. One with a greater intervention championed by Phil and one with less intervention championed by Frank. And talking about the pros and cons of that option, um and giving people a realistic expectation of what they can expect. If they want to be more closely monitoring that, um what results they may receive, if they want to be more hands-off, what results they may receive. And there are pros and cons, so it's an opportunity for people to really make decisions based on informed discussion. Um personally, I'm excited to share that I was helped out with the play, the elementary school play at Whittmore Prescott. Was delightful. They put on Alice in Wonderland on Monday. Um fourth, fifth and sixth graders did an amazing job. Um watching fourth and then sixth graders manage stage fright is very interesting. Um and in five minutes, I was trained to handle the lighting, so I'm gonna put that on my resume under special skills. I can handle the lighting as long as it, it's at Whittmore Prescott in the high school auditorium. Um, because I've been checked out on that equipment. Um but it was delightful and the, it was standing room only, honestly. Families were so delighted to be able to be present and see their kids succeed at the play. A lot of elementary schools don't do plays, and Karen Collins, who's our staff person there, heard kids say they really wanted to do it. They formed a committee, they cast the show, um and they pulled together the costumes and the sets and it was amazing. So great job to them. Um and then we talked about the program worker for the Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program. That job is posted, um and it is a temporary job, it's not designed to be full-time, it's part-time. Um and it will be based in Iosco County, um just because that's central to the funding areas that, that are pulling, I'm pulling money from Iosco County. Alcona County and here in Ogama County, but that position will serve all of these counties and will hold um onboarding opportunities. For volunteers in all of those areas, so we hope to really increase the number of people who are a part of our Extension Master Gardener Volunteer Program. These are people who voluntarily pay for education and then join a cadre of volunteers. They, they learn how and they go through screening to do that work, um and then they go out and they give in their community and they can work on approved projects. So there's lots of potential for approved projects in District Four. We'd love to see the growth of that as well. Um and in May, and I'll prob, I'll try to come back and, and share with more details about it. In May, right here in West Ranch, we're gonna have a tree pruning workshop offered by Julie Crick, who is our forester in the area. Um helping people understand how best to care for the trees in their yard. Um she works in forest environments, she works in with forest products producers. But this is an opportunity to talk about the scale of your homestead, your local, um how to care for those trees in your yards. And we're really fortunate that there's a landowner that invited us and was willing to host uh an education um on their property. So right here in West Ranch. Um we've also been busy responding to weather crises, crises that have happened, not necessarily here, but in our, to our neighbors to the north. Um and sharing information about how people can care for their trees, understand what trees are salvageable that may have experienced storm damage. And also how they can keep themselves safe if they, if they lost power and what food they can keep and what food they need to get rid of. Um I understand that that cleanup um is happening and there's a lot of it, so we're proud to be able to provide all of that. Thanks for listening, I know I, I'll try to come back more often so I don't have such a lot of this.
Questions for Julie? Comments?
Uh just my normal comment, obviously, as raised on with MSU Extension, and we have a milage here in the county for MSU Extension. Uh we had a meeting recently, and I always want to continue, how can we get more exposure for MSU Extension in our county? Because of the great things you guys do and the great things you offer for our younger kids. And we know we need to get our younger kids more hands-on, away from the tablets, outside. So I, I'm glad that uh MSU Extension's in the county. I hope it continues and we just need to keep pushing that exposure.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you.
There's numerous uh, it was Josh, the elected official department had reports on the iPad, so we appreciate those. Manners from the floor, any commissioners? Motion for adoption? Commissioner reports, Commissioner Wiltsey.
Uh Mills Township meeting this uh past Tuesday night, it was a, was a long meeting, a lot of different items. Uh the new board there, it's really. Really uh putting a lot into uh.
Really uh putting a lot into uh light and the parks and rec. Uh, you know, we have the new township hall that uh. Hopefully um construction for renovation will start soon there, but a lot of good things going on in Mills Township. It was good to see. Um, D H H S meeting, I mean, Commissioner Serbrook, we had that meeting uh yesterday. And it is public now that the D H H S uh will have a new building next to the Michigan State Police. Uh, possibly could be uh built and they could be moved in by summer of two thousand and twenty six. Uh, this past Wednesday morning, we had building security, building security meeting here at the county building. Uh, we know obviously that's an important topic. We had some good discussions. Uh, we also talked about, you know, what we're going to do when we move into switching over to the front doors. Um, so that was this past Wednesday. Um. I'm going to keep it pretty light tonight.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, because of my recent back surgery, I wasn't able to get to the city. Meeting or foster township this uh, this month. We did have Parks and Rec this morning and talked about the credit card. Um, we. Um, there will be a cleanup at the RV park this weekend coming up. There will be spaghetti dinner. At Clear Lake Bar for the nature park on the nineteenth. Um, fundraiser. Uh. The high banks uh found out that the guy that. Got drunk and drove through the place a few months ago and knocked all the posts down, got uh. Ordered by the court to pay restitution. So he started, has started paying some restitution towards. Uh, getting, getting, uh, to help us out with getting that fixed up. Um, so I don't really have anything going on right now. I'm healing up and we'll be able to get to more meetings. Um.
Glad you're doing well. Nice to see you back.
Thanks.
I didn't see you walking yet.
Oh, yeah, I'm walking a little better.
Good. Yes, Commissioner Wiltie?
I just a couple of things that on uh, we had our budget meeting uh this morning. It's really good to see that consistently now the. Stakeholders are, are coming to these meetings. Uh, we obviously have seen um. Now that we have the fiscal year two thousand and twenty four numbers back, that these decisions we're making are working. Um, but we had a really good budget meeting this morning. As Tim said, uh, you know, we're looking pretty good on track so far for fiscal year two thousand and twenty five. But it's really good to see that everyone is there at the table, having good, strong talks. And then um, just real quick, we had an L E meeting prior to this meeting and it was a very productive. Meeting and we discussed a lot of items and I know we'll have some more things to discuss up in closed session.
Commissioner Serrick?
Well. Commissioner Scott and I participated in mediation this past Friday, right after his return from the surgery. That was a marathon session. It started at ten thirty and I think we got done about quarter to five. Friday. Yes, it was, it would maybe and after, may have gone after five o'clock Friday. Yeah, it was. Quite lengthy. So, um, that was Friday. As Commissioner Wiltie said, we attended uh D H H S. Uh, yesterday I had West Branch Township. That was a quickie. I think we were out of there within about thirty five minutes, not much on their agenda. And then as Commissioner Wiltie said, we had a budget, which was, I think was really good. We were. About an hour and a half, I think, this morning. Real good discussion, everything looking good. So I'm quite pleased with. The way the budget is and I'm happy to be on the committee. So that's all I have, ma'am, chair.
I attended Hill Township uh meeting last week. They. Uh, supported a contract for lawn maintenance, road commission annual bryning, uh BSNA training. They're having them come up. It was a little pricey, eleven hundred dollars. They have a new uh clerk. And treasure up there and they want to make sure that they're utilizing that software to the uh best of their ability. Also a fire contract. Uh, that they approved as well. Logan Township, they hired a new assessor. Cleanup for their cemetery is April twenty sixth and they made a few budget uh adjustments. Nine one one was last night. They have a dispatcher that is retiring soon after twenty five years of service. They're very, very sad to see her go. Um, the three fire departments did show up for the meeting to discuss their um concerns about the transferring of V H F. To the eight hundred radios, their cost. I did reassure them along with the um. Board that there is no immediate rush on the, their equipment that's in the sheriff's, the old sheriff's office over there. However, the future of that. Building is uncertain. Um, but they came, they voiced their concerns. Um, we talked about some grants, some funding. So they were saying that was basically tabled until next meeting. So there's going to be more information that is brought to the table on that. Those three departments are, that. Were there last night was Mills Township, uh, Richland Township and West Branch, the city of West Branch. So there'll be more to come on that. Uh, there is some overtime unfortunately right now with nine on one. Um. Going on, they also have one in training that will be done. It's just a continuous um. Nonstop with training and new hires and vacations and uh they have another retirement that will be coming up this upcoming summer. So also I did claims this week and then zoning, we had another meeting. We're having some gatherings for zoning to discuss. This week was the solar energy ordinance. So there was a, a couple of different townships that were there. Um, I don't know, it was probably ten people there, I would say total. It was a nice round, kind of roundtable discussion. Ryan went over the. Template that he has for the ordinance. There was just some open random questions, conversations. So that was about an hour and a half. We've had one now for battery storage and we've had one now for solar energy. So. Um, that's, and I know Commissioner could not be here tonight. Um, he's got a family that is having some very severe medical. Issues. So please keep him and his family in your thoughts. So that's all. Anybody miss anything?
Nope.
General public comment, any? And not in the room? Any on the phone? Item seventeen.
I'd like to make a motion to go into closed session to consider strategy connected to negotiation of collective bargaining agreement. M C L fifteen point two six eight C.
Motion, Commissioner Scott. Or Commissioner Serberk. Tim, will there be any business after the meeting?
Possibly.
Okay. Uh, roll bubble.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Mark Serberk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Does anybody need a quick break?
I do.
I wasn't going to, but somebody.
I'm not bashful, all right?
Jenny David.
Yes.
Mark Serberk.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
I'll make, go ahead.
Oh, you go ahead.
I'll make a motion to come into open sessions, support.
Motion with support to come back into open session at eight forty three.
Roll call vote. All right, Mark Serberk.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
I will make a motion to uh allow allocate, open allocation list in the Corrections Department. To put on another um corrections officer. Full time. And a, well, I'll make it separate. Just do that one first.
You can do them both?
Okay, and a part time secretary. Twenty hours a week. Uh, to the sheriff's department.
Report.
We have a motion with support discussion.
I think it's good. I think we're, I'm, I'm good.
Roll call vote. Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Frank Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Uh, Mark Serberk.
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Support.
For.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. We are done, guys.
Good night, everyone.
You're not.
This is the.